I think on the implant, they gave me some, uh, narcotics that if it starts hurting, you can take these. So I never used them. And about a year and a half later, we had a big Christmas party at our house and.
This is a great story. Just stop it right there.
Just banned it. But all of the bottle was there, but all the pills were gone by that time. One of my nephews or nieces.
Oh, my God.
Probably one of my nephews.
Said, oh, I like those.
Uh, knew what they were and.
That's terrible.
I know. You know, probably should have thrown them where, you know, you're supposed to turn them in, but, um, and there's only about eight or 10 pills, but.
But still.
My brother's the chief deputy. And there's, um, he told me, he said, yeah, one of, one of, one of our nephews took them.
Well, I should have taken Tylenol as soon as I got back, but I really couldn't. I mean, I was really numb. It's just now starting to get some feeling.
Now, that's the city secretary taking care of thing, taking care of business.
Yeah, you don't want to get behind on that kind of pain, though.
Oh, man, we can just rotate these things, right?
So we do have dinner here.
Oh, yeah, you mentioned.
The question is whether y'all want to eat while up there while we're doing this. It's up to you. Um, I have a number of slides to go through that are budget related, and then we're going to take a break and then do the mission vision values, if you want to do a break at that time. So it's kind of up to y'all how you want to do things.
If, I, I, if you don't mind, I don't mind eating through the program.
Okay.
And.
That way we get it done.
How long do you think anticipate this going? Couple hours?
I really don't know.
Um, reason is I have another board meeting at eight o'clock tonight.
Look at that, right on time.
As we talk about this, the Alsatian Festival of Texas Incorporated.
Mm-hmm.
Its board meeting starts at eight.
I hope we'll be done by then for a lot of reasons.
Well, I mean.
Not least of which is my jaw is killing.
Yeah, well, hopefully if we can, because I'm probably going to have to leave here at seven thirty to get to that board meeting.
I, we brought food, kind of, one, because we promised we would, um, not necessarily because it's going to be a long meeting.
Well, Scott just asked, we might, we, and we kind of probably let's just move the thing rolling, we'll just eat while things going on, or just go get our plates and.
So you can either.
Whenever we get hungry.
Because when we start it and then.
We're gonna, we're gonna work, work and eat at the same time.
Okay, I'll leave the ice. I have ice in the tea if y'all want, and I have water that's already for, uh, for.
Can we get the ice after we start?
Yep. We actually know.
We can just start it and then as we do it, maybe just one at a time, get up and go while you're preparing the presentation.
Good point.
Do you have a agenda?
I have.
I don't think there's a lot on the agenda.
Yes.
I didn't bring mine, thank you.
I had a question to that. This one about.
Look. Come on.
It's.
I'm sure I got my phone sound.
It's fifteen and a half million there, but fourteen point three of that is utility.
Gotcha.
That's why I was thinking low, because you don't find that's nothing.
Right. All right, um, interesting. So we're going to call this meeting to order at five oh two P M. We will start with the roll call, starting with District One.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey, District Two.
Phil King, District Three.
Darren Schroeder, Mayor, um, and Councilman Sheerheart is not going to be in attendance tonight.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
Perfect, thank you. So are we not doing the plans on this one?
Apparently not.
I missed the.
Well, we didn't.
We didn't.
But we can if you want to get up to it. Sorry.
It's a workshop. I know we didn't do all the formalities when we did our retreat, but it's up to y'all.
Okay. All right, since it's especially called, we'll just move on to citizens comments. All right? Great. All right.
Bless you.
Bless you. All right, so we're going to do citizens comments.
Two of them.
Open that now. Anybody want to speak for citizens comments? All right, then we'll close that one. Um, we're going to start discussion on year-to-date F Y twenty twenty dash twenty-one budget. Uh, and something, uh, I'm going to start doing is just reading out the time that we're going into this. Um, so we'll do that at five oh four on item number four.
All right, and as we stated, uh, Mayor, you want people to just go one by one?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do you ever brave enough to do it first?
I've seen it.
Sheena, I think we're going to wait for you to go. We've got a bunch of gentlemen up here.
I'm good. You guys go.
Okay. Paul, go ahead.
Do y'all want ice?
Oh, no, I'm good right now. Thank you.
I'll just go get ice.
I'll wait a little while.
Okay.
All right, you guys get started. I'm going to go hit some.
Paul, Paul, Paul proposed a plan and we are immediately rejecting it.
Apparently after three hours.
Is this in presentation?
Yeah.
Then why isn't it advanced? Is it not advanced with the, do you have, you don't, you don't want a clicker, right?
Hey.
Okay. A little bit.
I had progress.
I want to go back. These are arrows. These are my arrows? Okay, all right, all right. Thank you. I'm used to entering that space. Those arrows. Okay. So the first thing we're going to go over is just a budget review. Uh, now, the mayor's already seen this, I think, twice, because he did, uh, I solicited his input just to better understand kind of what the council might be looking for, understanding that each of you may have a different need when it comes to what we're looking at. Um, and then I showed it to him again today. So he's already seen this twice. He's going to see it a third time today. So this is going over the current budget. I just kind of wanted to give you some highlights. This is the same information we had during our budget retreat, which really was kind of more of a strategic retreat than budget, as you know. So this is just a way to look at our revenues by source. Uh, you'll see in some other sales taxes and property taxes are relatively close together. Uh, they're easily our two largest. That other revenue, that's your transfers in. So the, the large utility transfers you every year, uh, that's what that would, that would be.
I mean, is, is this, is this a accrual basis or is this cash? In other words, like our municipal court, that's actual cash?
So it's accrual, the general fund operates on an accrual basis. The, uh, proprietary funds operate on, on a modified accrual basis.
Or is that a real municipal court number?
Or flipped over that. Uh, yeah.
Okay. Because I know that we have a.
Again, these are, these are not, this is your budget.
Right.
So these are not year-to-date numbers. This is your budgeted number.
Okay, so these aren't the real numbers?
No, these are budgeted, well, they're real numbers. These are your budgeted numbers. So whatever we're doing is.
But just budgeted, not, not.
Not year-to-date.
Right.
Right, right. I don't want to keep doing. Uh, so yeah, there's your revenues. This is your, just your general fund budget broken out by category, major spending category, personnel supplies, that sort of thing. Uh, and you'll see obviously the biggest portion of money is spent on people. That is very, very common. Uh, I'd say the vast majority of towns our size, eighty-five percent or more of their budget is people. Um, a very large portion of, of the cost is. Um, here it is by department. Remember, we talked about your priorities and, and where we saw, uh, you know, which, which things you thought were most important, and we saw that actually your spending lines up that pretty well. You're spending your largest portion on, uh, police and animal control. It's about one point one million. City administration is another one point one. And then, uh, the, the next highest, obviously, is streets. And when we looked at our, our priorities, police and streets were very high on that General fund budget, municipal court. Again, I, now that, we're going to breeze through these, but this is each of the, the departments and their major spending categories. Uh, when we look at the proposed budget, uh, a little bit later, it's actually going to compare each category as vending, uh, so you can see what the proposed budget versus current budget looks like. So again, you should see personnel as one of the largest expenses in every single one of these, because it's the largest expense of the general fund. It's library, here's police. There's parks. Parks, uh, has a significant expenditure on supplies. Do you want to guess what that is?
Like swimming pool?
Yep. Yeah, pool is a pretty big expense, expense, so that's why you're seeing about a hundred thousand dollars there. Those chemicals are not cheap. The only plus is that the pool generally pays for itself. That's not always the case. Many, 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 many cities subsidize pools. Uh, ours, I think, is about a breakeven proposition.
Have we just got, uh, run into any, uh, increase in expenditure with the chlorine problem?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, not only that, but we're actually, we're actually having to use more chlorine. So it's, it's a double whammy. It's a, well, she's right, because chlorine costs have gone up, shortage, there's been some shortages, um, and our usage of chlorine has gone up. We've had some issues with our chemicals in the pools, so Devon's been working with a consultant to get that under, you know, it was a good question. So there's your streets budget. Streets, again, fifteen percent of it is, uh, supplies, and that is going to be road-based material and that sort of thing. Uh, their capital expenditures, I don't think are recognized in this budget, because they spent, uh, we have a, what, a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred and fifty, somewhere around there, budgeted four streets improvements. So that's not in that one. Uh, there's community development. You can see contracted service makes up a big piece. Uh, essentially, you know, we're, we're spending some money on personnel, like contracted services, a lot of that is personnel. It's engineering and inspection services. By and large, those do get repaid to us. We recoup those in the form of costs, the permitting costs, et cetera. Here's your city administration. And that, uh, who else is included in our personnel? Because I don't make six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, but.
It's, uh, finance.
Is that, okay, that's why, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. So later you will see us, in, in, in some areas, we'll actually break out finance and H R, but for these purposes, city administration is all of those lumped together. Again, this is current budget, sorry. There's your city council. That miscellaneous expense, that makes up the largest portion, that is your special project, special events. Uh, so that's things like the bike rally that y'all do, that you support.
Tour de gastro.
Fireworks we just had. It's those types of events, and it's about thirty-five thousand dollars. Also, I wanted to show you just kind of a historical breakdown of taxes. The smaller bar, that orange bar, that's, uh, the I N S, the interest and sinking, your debt service amount. Uh, the mayor was asking me, and you heard me answering him just a minute ago, what was our, what is our, uh, debt service amount right now? As of the last audit, this most recent audit that wrapped up in March, um, we have fifteen million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in outstanding debt, but the mass, vast majority of that is, uh, utility rates supported. Uh, fourteen point three million is for the Texas Water Development Board. And then you have bonds, notes, and capital leases that add up to about one point four million. One point one million. And then you can just see the tax rate on the right. Uh, another question the mayor had was, I thought we lowered taxes last year, and he was right, we did. Uh, as a city, we lowered them by point zero, zero, one, one cents, so not a lot, one tenth of one cent. This is the, what's that? This is the.
Matter of fact, that's significant.
Sales tax comparisons. And really, the takeaway from this slide is just that your property sales tax are fairly equal, and they have been for a very long time. It's interesting to see, uh, cities across the state, how they compare. In some cases, property taxes is what they live by. I mean, they just, they have virtually no sales tax, and so they're, we generally refer to those as veteran communities, uh, don't have a lot of manufacturing or anything else, just a bunch of houses, and their tax rate usually is reflective of that. They're pretty expensive living, um, just by and large, as an average. I don't know how many cities are, are like ours, where they're really close together, uh, but I would imagine not too many. Uh, usually, usually one of them is going to be dominant, uh, and quite often, sales tax outpaces property tax by quite a bit.
Waiting for that day to happen.
What's that?
Waiting for that day to happen.
Right.
Sales tax outpaces our property taxes.
Right. Here's our revenues versus expenditures. Your expenditures is actually that orange line, and the bottom line is revenues. Uh, you may recall when we were in the retreat several weeks back, uh, the question was asked, well, then how are you, how are we paying for things? Well, this is absent the transfers, so there is no, I, I purposely wanted to show you, without that utility transfer, the general fund has never paid its own way. Um, it's really, really close. It's getting closer every year, but, uh, without that transfer, we, we weren't breakeven. That's basically how we balance the budget, if you want to think about it that way. This is what those transfer amounts added up to, and I apologize, uh, we'll probably make these numbers bigger for next meeting, but, uh, you can see on the left, or maybe you can't, it's around seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, in two thousand eleven. Uh, it topped out around nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen, and this last year was eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And this is what that same slide looks like once you factor the transfers in. And you can see, like I said, that's, that's how we were paying, paying our ways despite getting those transfers in.
I think two thousand seventeen, did the council reduce the percentage of transfers? That's why it dropped to two thousand seventeen.
No one knows.
No, it was higher.
Maybe, well, I mean, well, I should say two thousand seventeen to eighteen.
Yeah. So two thousand eighteen. There's definitely a decrease. It wasn't a tremendous, it's about seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Tremendous decrease.
I don't remember taking any action that way.
Something about very legit, then we took an action, dropped the amount of transfers.
So this is kind of what your fund balances has done over that same time period, and as, as you know, they've grown pretty steeply just in the last couple of years. Uh, and then this is what that looks like with the days of operating. Now, there's three, three correlaries, right? Obviously, days of operating are going to directly correlate to your, uh, fund balance reserves, but there's also the, the expenditure. So if your expenditures rise exponentially, then your actual days of operation might decrease, even though your fund balances increased. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Like if we added, well, like Innis did, they added, we added sixteen firefighters in one year, and that added one point six million dollars of expense, and it was, um, our fund balance went up the following year, but our days of operating went down because we had a, we had a, I can't remember what the percentage increase was, probably a five percent increase or four percent increase. Anyway, um, so this is just to show you the most recent year, uh, three hundred and ninety-eight is what that top number says, and it correlates with this next slide. This is your cash balances. You've seen this before as well. Uh, this is just showing you general fund. We'll, we'll show you utility funds later at our next workshop, um, that we have almost four hundred days of operating, and that's based on our daily costs of roughly eight thousand dollars per day to operate the city. So what are the key takeaways from those previous slides? And these are just three that I thought of, and I'd be interested to hear if you have any others that we could add to this, this slide. First, obviously, the city has strong fund balances. Uh, you're in a very strong financial position. Uh, secondly, the general fund has not been paying its own way. We talked about that earlier. And then third, um, just looking back at that tax rate slide, the city has not issued any significant debt in the general fund in many years, and that goes back to, yes, you have about sixteen millions of dollars of debt, but, uh, fourteen and a half of that is, is for the utilities side of things, not for the general fund. And it's an observation, not an indictment. Uh, just making the observation. Any other key takeaways from anybody else?
The one and a half million that's not utility-related, what is that?
Well, you have, so you have capital leases in about nineteen thousand, so I'm guessing those are vehicles or equipment. Uh, and then you have the bonds and that, and notes payable of one point one million, roughly. Uh, but I'd have to go back and look and see, well, when were those issued and what were they issued for, because I don't know. But we can probably figure that out.
Hey, listen, that's the, uh, we haven't, have we paid off the, uh, the drainage improvements, bonds that were out a long time ago? I'm trying to think, I don't know.
Possibly. I don't, what I'd like to see, I don't have a debt service schedule in front of me, which would show me all the debts you've issued from beginning of time and when they fell off, and the amounts that they originally were, like the original issue. I don't have that, so I'll have to get that to be able to answer that kind of the questions, though.
Okay.
Any other takeaways from these slides that y'all can think of? I mean, I guess another one, is it personnel expenses? I mean, I don't, I don't think we're paying too much, but it is a big part of what we spend our money on.
Yeah, you, you stated that the general fund had not, um, supported itself in many years. I think that's kind of by design, because there was an intent to rely upon that, that utility transfer, and, uh, I see that a whole lot like I see the sales tax. I'd rather have a, have people who are using services paying, you know, for them and supporting the city than having, having property taxes.
So, so I'm going, well, whereas, where I understand, I understand where you're coming from, however, the way the Public Utility Commission of Texas and the state, the state legislature is, is more often seeing it these days, they're starting, this is going back to that thing I talked to y'all about, uh, when I first got here, I think, probably in March timeframe. Part of the pending legislation was something that would penalize utility, uh, locally-owned utilities if they were above the market by more than ten percent, or I can't remember what the arbitrary, arbitrary number that they came up with was. So that's the cautionary tale, is while that has been the case, and it certainly has been the case, and there was nothing wrong with it, I don't think, because as long as the taxpayer understands that you're going to have one or the other, you're going to have really, you're going to have artificially low property taxes. Now, I don't think many people around here would say we have a low property tax, but really, they do. They, they've had an artificially low property tax for many years, because they've had probably a slightly higher-than-usual electric rate. And what's interesting is that there's not, I don't see a lot of dialogue in the legislature where legislators are pushing back on the public when they have these types of issues. They, they like to divide and conquer. Well, what happens when you divide and conquer? Your, your city goes broke. That's what happens, because either utilities will not be able to have enough money to reinvest themselves, or the city will need, you'll have higher tax rates, but they're trying to beat that down as well, right? They've capped the tax rate, and now they're looking at capping the, the municipally-owned utilities. So it's really a double-edged sword.
Also, historically, I think our property values have been below average for many, many years, and we're starting to see that change.
So, and that's another thing that, that is interesting, so I'm going to mention this a little bit later in one of my other slides, but they're, um, something for the public to know, and for, certainly for all, all of you to understand, is that the appraisal district, uh, it's very easy as a, as a property owner to get very, to get angry at the appraisal district, because your value went up so much. And I one hundred percent sympathize with families who are living on a fixed income, and they see their value, their property increase, but the fact of the matter is, it's not your fault, you already know that, you didn't do, have any to do with that, and it's not the appraisal district's fault. The state legislature requires appraisal districts to be within ninety-five, or ninety-eight percent and a hundred and five percent of the market. They're penalized if they aren't in that range. So they have to, so that's one reason why in recent years, and I, I can't tell you when that legislation passed, it's not that old. It's certainly been during the time that I've been a city manager that, that happened, um, but that has, that's really driven the property tax rate. And once they did that, then cities, of course, people were screaming at cities that their rates went down, because a lot of times, cities captured that value to go reinvest in the city. They saw it as, great, a little bit of a windfall, we can do some parks, we can do the streets, some other things we haven't done. So rather than seeing a drop in the rates, rates started to increase. Well, now the state's saying, well, no, you can't, you can't do that. So it, it's a, it's a major challenge that, uh, thankfully, I don't have to worry about, because that's the policymakers' challenge to deal with, that I'll probably bring you some suggestions.
You know, there's pain in its own way. We're similar to CPS in San Antonio. CPS is owned by the city of San Antonio. They, it's a corporation, and corporations make profit, and because the city of San Antonio owns it, that profit goes back to subsidize the city. That's exactly true, catch true. If we were like Houston, where you have private utility vendors, that profit, instead of coming back to the citizens, that profit would go to corporations and their shareholders.
Yep.
So we have to remember that, yes, it's, it's not a freebie service, it's not a no-profit, it's, it's a not, a not-for-profit corporation. It makes money. Part of those transfers is to pay for costs that the city takes on because they're running it. Part of it has to do with the utility right-of-ways that we give, the, the city gives the utility, but also part of it is profit, and we shouldn't be ashamed, the fact that it has profit, because the city was very fortunate years ago to make that determination, instead of us paying profit to shareholders of utility corporations, we're paying that profit back to us. So I, I don't have a problem with us transferring monies to support the city. I think that was a smart decision made by city leaders years and years ago.
Well, again, I said earlier, it's an observation, not an indictment.
Right, no, and I just, but yeah, because I keep getting hammered all the time about, well, you know, you make your utility bills are so high, and you do this and that, but in, remember, as you said earlier, and it's true, if, if we didn't have that income, or maybe, or maybe Paul said it, but if we didn't have that income, our property rates would, our taxes would have to go, if we couldn't survive. So the fact that we're getting that profit off of the corporation that we own, that people years ago made that decision to do it that way, it's always been, like, some people say, well, we should just sell it. Well, yeah, but if you sell it, you'll have this short-term.
Property taxes are going to go up.
Wind farm.
Windfall.
And you lose that yearly reoccurring income, so.
Well, so one of the things that you'll see with the proposed budget is, I'm going to flip the script on that. That's a, is that a, is that a young person term, or can we actually use that here? I don't know.
A not-performing.
So one of the things that I want to do is, um, where you're, where you're calling it profit, Phil, the only challenge I would push back a little bit on that is, is our reinvestment in the utility system. If you lack, if you haven't been reinvesting in the utility system responsibly, then you can't claim a profit, right?
Rebuilding assets.
You might be overstating. I guess that's what, that's what an accountant would say, that you overstated your profits in those years. But again, I don't want to, the past is a past, and, and honestly, I, I don't have any condemnation to, to add, other than just observations that, that any, anybody in the city, any of our citizens have already made, made us aware of, which is utilities need investment, the city needs investment. So I'm going to talk about kind of where we started this budget process, that's actually the next, but did you have a comment?
Well, I was going to, well, first, if you don't mind me convincing a little bit, um, one of the, the, the first two are very strongly related. Um, thank you for, I, I know you've been putting a lot of work into getting these things level-set, um, even though they're not necessarily wrong, they're not necessarily accurate. So on that second item, uh, the way that you, and he'll talk about this in a few minutes, um, the way that he's approaching that is making it so that we understand exactly where those costs are. What would it cost somebody if a, if an outside utility came, company came in and were to operate this? What would their costs be? And how do you level-set that? So it's not one big bolt transfer, but it's more specific in terms of what costs are they actually paying for. So, uh, I appreciate all of the diligence on that. It just helps us get a lot more accurate. On the other one, with the strong fund balances and the new debt, that's something else that he's been working on, and one of the reasons that, that I was so adamant about getting And one of the reasons that, that I was so adamant about getting somebody in here, I think we were all adamant about getting somebody in here with very strong financials, is because they can take a look at where we have missed opportunities. And one of the missed opportunities is our fund balances have grown tremendously in the last couple of years. We kind of took a pause for COVID, which I think that was, I think that was the right move. That started really two years ago. We, we followed that up yes, last year in making sure that we're not overspending. I guess luckily and unluckily, luckily, our revenues didn't go down significantly to, to impact us, but now we have, I would call it an excess, but it also puts us in very strong standing to, to get optimal terms with our, with our debt service. So the, as Scott starts walking through some of this stuff, I want to be really careful because what I've heard from, I've heard this from a lot of people, the city's broke, you're totally in debt, you can never dig yourself out, and that is absolutely not the case. And as we're looking at issuing debt, it is doing it responsibly and smartly so that we can optimize the amount of money that we have, especially considering the growth that we're getting ready to go under. How do we invest now with the money that we already have without putting ourselves, like, we don't want to benefit our current by sacrificing our kids' futures.
Thank you.
So I want to talk about kind of what this, the 2020, so that was 2021, FY 2021. This is looking at next year. What's our, what does the budget process consist of that's led us to this point? So kind of the first thing I did was absent any, any immediate or clear direction from council, not because you didn't provide it, because I didn't ask for it, but we, we've had some discussions, but somewhat based on those discussions, I kind of assumed some, some major points. One of them is that, that we all want to adopt a balanced budget. So unlike that slide that we saw before where it was kind of being balanced through transfers, I was going to attempt to create what would be a balanced budget so expenditures and revenues are the same. Also, we need to make sure that we get tight control on operations and maintenance costs. Now, a couple of the things that we're in the process of doing that I think will help do that is outsourcing HR, human resources and payroll. Y'all have already approved that and I, I believe that's going to allow us as we grow in the future, as we need, there's need to grow, there won't be, the added expense for that growth will be minimized simply because we pick a partner that doesn't kill us every time we add a, add one employee, et cetera. It's going to be a incremental cost increase. And then streamlining data input and customer service. And our mayor asked me a question earlier about, didn't I mean to say improve customer service? Certainly that's a goal. I want to improve customer service. And I could say, I think you could say that as part of this process, customer service will be enhanced, it will be improved. But streamline was really what I intended to say because what I'm trying to do is do something similar to what we did with the human resources and payroll. Utilize our software systems to make it so that we're more efficient on data entry and data management. The, the city had already made a number of investments in different areas, but, but we have not had a holistic approach to how we're handling our data. And I know I'm going to start to sound like our mayor a little bit because of his Microsoft connections, but just for the way he talks and the way I'm talking right now about data. But it really is important as far as efficiencies in government. If we have access to information, control that information, are able to input it easily, when we talk about turnover and that kind of thing, all of that has a, a very real effect on costs and cost maintenance, maintaining your costs where they're at. So it allows us, allows us again to do more without adding more people. And that, that was a big concern of mine is to make sure we put ourselves in that position. And so far, everything that we've been able to, to identify has been budget neutral. And so I'm very proud of that. And what I'm proposing to do would be more of the same. A lot of it will be budget neutral. So then the other is to provide you all with data and information that you feel as policymakers will actually be helpful because truly this, this document, this budget is a policy document at its root. It is at its core, the means to go and do things that are important to you all, so and important to the community abroad. So being able to provide you with the information that allows you to make the decisions and have some degree of, of confidence around those decisions is an important part of this budget process. And then finally, position the city for some capital investment. Again, not with any dollar figures in mind or specific projects other than the ones that we've talked about. You know, we know that River Bluff is going to be an issue that we've, we've got phase one, but we've got other phases we're going to have to pay for. And we've, I've talked a lot about, you know, covering ourselves when we go out and expend our dollars that we have in the bank right now. Can we pay ourselves back through a bond issuance in the future? And y'all have taken those steps to be able to do that. So I wanted to be able to, to create a budget that allowed for this in the future. And hopefully that's what this proposed budget does. So this is the actual process and I believe we saw these slides and they were true as well. The department heads were given five years of actual data, that'd be FY 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. And then were asked to, to provide a proposed budget, they were given an average of what those expenditures were, and then they were asked to provide a proposed budget. And so then that's what they did. They came back with proposed numbers. That's what that arrow is pointing to. And then we sat down, Leroy and I, with each one of those department heads in usually an average of an hour, 10 hour and a half with each department head going through these numbers and really digging in and understanding, well, what are those expenditures? Did we think about everything? And as I shared with you all, it wasn't all about reduction. In some cases, yeah, we identified areas where we really weren't budgeting enough and we needed to increase that line item. But overall, it did result in a reduction. We were able to, to reduce costs, as you'll see. More or less, we leveled set and I'll, I'll show you how and why and, but that's what that, that process consisted of. So here's, at the end of the day, this is what I'm bringing to you as a proposed budget. I've circled that number in the lower right because that's the proposed revenue amount. It's $3,339,580. Now compared to the prior year, that's a reduction of about $800,000. Now, some of that is because we were able, and I'm going to, I'm going to outline exactly what these amounts add up to, but we're able to get the utility department to pay the direct cost of running that utility system. So they don't currently have anyone on HR or in finance or administration. They've got a public works director, but they don't have anybody that's doing contract review, et cetera, at my level. So they're paying me and Deborah and Leroy and our HR, they're going to pay a portion of those costs. Their fair share, shares is the idea. And those add up to, I have a later slide there because the, the actual number is around $400,000, so a little bit less than 400. That transfer in above that, that is a payment in lieu of taxes and that is a placeholder because I'm waiting on the consultant to give me the actual number, what it really should be. And whatever that amount is, it is. If it's, if it's less than the transfer that was taking place in the past, so be it. If it's a little bit more, so be it. It will be the number that, that it should be and that is kind of a legally defensible and a rationally defensible number. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yep.
So that's kind of the goal, that's what we start with. The expenditures, look, they're magically the same amount. And part of that is again, that filler number, that 249. I, I figured out what my expenditures were, I figured out what the revenues were minus that pilot and I just plugged in the number I needed. But we'll see what it ends up being at the end of the day and we'll make tweaks as necessary. So I wanted to give you just a, this is just comparing the general fund budget. Again, we'll look at utility funds at the next budget workshop. For 2021, 4.1 million, proposed budget's 3.3 billion. So what were the kind of major factors affecting this budget? Well, first off, we've already talked about it. Personnel is the largest expense. So what that means is anytime there's an increase in personnel costs, that part of the budget, that's, that's your largest part of the budget. Thankfully this year, we really didn't have tremendous increases. 3% cost of living is what we're proposing in this budget. It adds up to a little bit, just around $51,000. And a 4% increase in health insurance, again, that's not terrible. I've had as much as 13 in past cities and it was terrible, but 4% is not too bad. It adds up to $26.84 per employee per month. And then obviously a bit, two big items that are really helping to reduce that, that cost. Number one is $393,336 that's being transferred. It's not transferred, but that's direct payment of the utility system of, of that employee cost. And then, and that's portions of finance, human resources administration, city secretary, as I stated earlier. And then no capital expense. So whereas the past budget you adopted had like $250,000 in streets and some other areas where you're, you're expending capital items, this one has no capital expense. It also has no service level adjustments. What I consider a service level adjustment is anything that is new and different than what we're doing today. So it's new employees or positions or new pieces of equipment, not replacement equipment, like something brand new that we don't already have. So this budget, this proposed budget doesn't have any of that in there. Doesn't mean that we don't need it, I just don't have it.
May I ask?
Yes.
What's the official consumer price index?
It depends on, yeah, there's, there's 250 different CPIs out there. So it depends on what you look at. I know that grocery is going up by more than 5%.
What is, I'm sorry?
Grocery, some milk, eggs and, you know, just your staple goods. I think staple goods are, are going up pretty high. But I'll be honest, I didn't adopt a CPI and that's something we can talk about and refine and I can bring you the different CPIs and we can, if we want to peg to a CPI, we can.
I'd just like to know what it is.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, the, the one that the labor department puts out as the CPI, which is, it's a combined government.
Kind of a mix.
And that's the one they use officially. I'd just like to know.
Yeah, let me, I'd like to know which one, if you have a source for what you're referring to.
I'll go get it.
Send it to me because like I said, when you look at CPIs, there's literally, now there's some that people generally try and pick because they say this is, they call it the normal, like a grocery cart and it's a bunch of different, they mix together. They say this is kind of what that is. And that's generally what I point to, but there's, there's a bunch of options. Yes, sir.
So on this budget, it doesn't detract because we're all about trying to retain the people that we already have and everything. And I know when we were hiring you and everything, we were talking about possibly improving the retirement plan for our employees to incentivize them to stay. You know, I don't want to detract from that thought process that we had all been talking about back then, also with the training. You know, make sure that if our people need training, that it's not, we're not saying, no, sorry, we can't afford to send you this year, what have you.
I think we'll have, you'll see a breakdown of those areas and where, how they compare across each one. And then as we go through those, if you have a specific question, we can ask it. It does not, and I can add that to the slide later. Leroy, I think is taking notes for me, but it does not include any change to our retirement plan.
Okay.
I will tell you, one of the things that's helping us right now is we are, we are technically overfunded. I think I explained this in the past. You're a two to one 5%. That means that the employee contributes 5% and then y'all match it with the 10% contribution. No, that's not the way they get. They have to be vested and even when they're vested, they don't get to take any, they get to take only what they contributed out and a lump sum. The rest of it, the city's contribution is going to be in a defined benefit plan at the end of the term. It's basically a pension that you're paying into. A lot of employees struggle to understand that because they think, oh, I'm getting 15% every year and that's a nest egg and it's like a 401k and I can take it out. No, you can't and you can't borrow against it either. So you all though, your rate of contribution, I haven't, do you know what the new rate is? It was, it's sub 10%. When I got here, I remember looking at that and you're less than, you're, I think you're at nine and change or maybe less than nine. So that's good. That means that you've got, your contributions are sitting in that account, add up to more than 10% of the current payroll. Most cities, in fact, every city that I'm aware of, they're, they're behind the ball and they're contributing. And one city, I think I shared with you, it was a two to one 7%. So the city's contribution should be 14%. They were paying 22.
So that's 9.84.
9.84, okay. So slightly under 10. I was thinking it was less than that. But that's good. That means that you're, you're ahead of the curve, you're not even actually really paying in 10%. But what that also means is that we can be able to add a little bit to it and not, you know, blow the doors off because you're not, you're not paying more than 10 already.
Yeah, I was just looking at stuff to incentivize keeping the good bodies we have, you know, and I know that we had discussed looking at improving the incentives for our employees, whether it be by retirement pay or even paying maybe for some of their college, if they need courses or what have you, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so again, these are, these are things that I'd love you all to think about. I can come back to you and tell you, well, this is how much that would cost. One of the ideas, you can take and increase the, the retirement contribution rate and they have six and seven percent tiers. There's no mids, so it's either five, six or seven. It's either one to one or two to one. You're already two to one, you could go to two to one six or two to one seven. But we could also look at doing a matching plan into a 457B, which is just another retirement vehicle. And what that would do is allow people who wanted to opt in, to opt into that plan and the city would match up to one or 2% rather than just increasing 10% rest for everyone. It, it, it puts a little bit of bonus back on that employee to say, I want to opt in and here's how much I'm going to contribute to that. So I have looked at that, but I haven't run the numbers on it because we haven't really had any discussion about whether that was something that you all want to pursue.
I think.
And well, in response to Herb's question, in the last 12 months, is he guy, Paul Urban, he is 5%.
Okay, I thought it was around there.
Yeah. I had a question about, you know, capital expenses, you know, I seek some elaboration. We're talking about no.
No.
Go ahead.
Please.
No capital expense.
I think his impression was, are we not spending any capital out of this budget?
Oh, no capital. When you said capital, I was thinking capital improvements, not, okay. Because I know we're going to have to have some capital improvements.
Yeah, but there's no capital improvements.
No capital expense.
But there's no capital improvements either.
Okay.
Because we are going to talk about capital improvements separately and I'm going to, that's at the very end of the slide. My goal is to bring you an operations budget and, you know, I, it's interesting because in other cities I've worked in, and it goes back to masking, it really masks what is happening in the general fund when you try to, when you put everything into the fund every year and you fluctuate between grants, so your revenues will skyrocket sometimes and expenditures, maybe you do a big, a big build somewhere and now that's, you know, a new facility and it's 23 million, now your finish went up. I really try to treat those separately because at least from my way of thinking, come from the private sector, if I'm policymaking around the budget, I want to be able to see what is that O and M cost actually doing every year? How is it fluctuating? And I had eight people, what did that actually do to my O and M? And you can actually track and see that over time when you have the O and M budget be by itself. It's a, it's a, thankfully here it's been, I've had no issues with Leroy, we've had good conversations, but in the past I've really had, I felt like I was beating my head against the wall talking to a finance director because they just didn't get it. I'm like, they didn't get it because they were so used to doing it the old way that I was like, no, no.
So that just means it's not going into the general.
It's not in this O and M budget, but we most definitely, I'm, I don't want to think that, I'm definitely recommending we make some capital improvements. And how you end up paying for those is totally obvious, it's up to you. I'm preparing you to be able to issue debt, but if we could continue to spend cash, I don't advise it for a lot of reasons, but we could. You, and how much you do is up to, obviously up to you. We have a lot of money in fund balance. You have 398 days. I would recommend not having any more than 120. And I would recommend 120 for both funds, in part because I never have understood, some people say, well, you only need 90 in utilities. Why? Because they're going to have even less of a disaster? It doesn't make any sense. Either it's 90 or it's 120, I don't care, but, but pick a number and then use that number for all the funds that are operating, that have people in them. If you don't have people in them, you don't need a fund balance or debt service may be, may have some debt, you have some requirements when you issue that debt, you say you're going to have a certain amount. But other than that, if you have people in the fund that you're supporting, they need a fund balance and I would recommend you establish a policy and whatever that policy states, that's what should be existence for all of us.
That clarifies, thank you.
What's that?
That clarifies that it's just not, not in this window.
We agree with you.
So this is just your adopted versus, or your, yeah, your adopted budget, the current budget versus proposed. The blue line on bottom is your current budget. The orange line on top is the proposed budget. You will see that the, the orange line on top is at or less than every other comparative category except for supplies. And I'll get into supplies in a minute and why that is. But generally speaking, we reduced, your, your department heads reduced their expenditures across the board. And again, some of that's personnel. 393,000 is personnel that's going over to the utility. I don't want to leave people believing we cut that much out, but we were able to cut some. So here's your personnel and supplies and you can see that huge reduction in personnel that's, that's going to utilities. Supplies went up by about $20,000. I don't know how legible that is. It looked a lot better on a small screen. This large screen, it seems, so we'll need to, yeah, make the, I don't know what the font is, but we'll double it.
So it increases by like $20,000.
It is double the font, but it increases by 20. Six of that is establishing a new emergency services department and it's not adding a person, but it's putting $6,000 in for supplies. And that's just a stab at, at starting somewhere, right? $10,000 of that is swimsuits for our swim team. Now that's covered by revenue, but in the expenditure side, it's going to show up. So they need new, Devin thinks the swim team's going to need new swimsuits or whatever. Well, they're going to pay for those, but we, we're going to recognize the expenditure on the expenditure side. And then about $4,500 of that is fuel and oil. We anticipate an increase in fuel costs and we're guessing it's going to be around $4,500. We'll see how it shakes out at the end of the year. It's our best guess. So there's purchase services, again, 2021, 2020, 21 is on the left, the proposed budget's on the right. You'll just, you'll see that in just about every category, it's, it's, it's being reduced. Education and training, down slightly. I cannot, it's about 10 grand, is that right?
14,000.
14. So.
14,000.
Some of that, I don't know that any of that's being picked up by utility though, right? Yeah. Yeah. So I think some of that's just looking at, again, what were we actually spending our money on and where, where is it better utilized? The train, that, that number, we believe is a real number for next year. We had some numbers, we had some amount in there that just didn't get utilized this last year. But again, as you, so I'm showing you the, the large items, I, I'm showing you by category and by department, but you will have access to the full spreadsheet. I do not encourage you to go line by line. You're welcome to do it. I don't, I'm not trying to hide anything from you. But certainly if you want to peel back the onion a little bit, you know, one more layer and look at it and just see, okay, well, this is where the training budget is, we can have those conversations. I don't mind having them all. Then there are repairs and maintenance, we expect that cost to go up just a little bit. And miscellaneous expense, which is one of the, I, I really, really don't like miscellaneous. I know that there are miscellaneous expenditures and they just happen, but it's just one of my pet peeves, having really big ambiguous numbers, right? So we reduce that a little bit. Tried to better define what we're actually spending money on. Then there's your capital outlay, obviously it went to zero because there is no capital outlay in the operations budget. Now there are some things, I don't want you to think that there's nothing that can be capitalized that, I'm, I'm going to confuse everyone for a moment, including myself probably. I'm differentiating between items that will be capitalized, like street improvements and other things, like major capital expenditures, and what I'm going to call minor capital expenditures. Minor capital expenditures are items like where we need to, we know we have a roof replacement or we have an AC unit that's going to go out or something else. Generally, they aren't nearly as big in cost as, as some of the other major capital improvements would be, but there are items that we're going to anticipate, that we're going to have to spend and they will technically be capitalized by your auditor. So I don't want you to believe that there's actually no expenditures in the budget that could be capitalized, there are probably a few. In a couple of different areas where we have building maintenance, that is going to be recognized on our, on our balance sheet as a capital. There's still some, there's still some small numbers in there, but they're, by and large, they're small numbers.
I don't know if they're really maintenance items, but because of accounting principles, it becomes a capital expense.
But you said that so much better than I did. Yes, thank you.
Now, one thing we've got to keep in mind, and I'm, I'm sorry, we should have talked about this before, but as we go forward, as we change basically where the buckets exist, we need to make sure that we provide trackability to the other ones. One of the confusing things, as I started learning about the city finances and the budgets, you go from one year to the next and there's these dramatic differences in them. So we need to make sure that we're tracking those for our.
Yeah, the best thing I can tell you, so I, I do make notes on every budget and every, and I keep the documents. I will eventually probably scan them into a folder and just have them in that folder. But the best thing you can do as policymakers is make notes in your budget books as you get them or as we talk about them so that you have something to refer back to. But the other thing, I, you know, we talked about this, I'm going to give you, we have, you know, data going back to two thousand and eleven. That's what we just, I don't know, that's kind of arbitrary, I guess, a little bit. I don't know how back, back, far back our audits go, but, uh, two, so that was it. So we, we use the, the first year of the current auditor and their audits. So that goes back to two thousand, two thousand and eleven. We know as we re-categorize expenditures, which is what the mayor is talking about, you lose the ability to track those expenditures. But I'm hoping that with the adoption of this budget and working with the, the finance director, we won't have a lot of major changes after this budget. So the, you, you lose kind of the relatability of the past years when you make those major changes, but going forward as we adopt the next budget, the next budget, the next budget, I, what I'll do is I'll probably drop off some of that old data because it just, it won't be relative anymore because we will have made enough changes that it's like, this is really our historical, this is really the average. I did an exercise where I was forecasting revenues, for instance, and it's really kind of, it's a very, very simple forward or backward regression, if you want to think about it that way. I take year over year expenditures and I, I see what the increase or decrease by percentage was. And then I average those over a number of years and it tells me what the average increase in or decrease in percentage was. I showed this, I believe, to the mayor briefly. It was terrible when you looked at our revenues because our revenues were not, did not follow a rhyme or reason, a lot of them. They were up two thousand percent one year and down ninety percent the next year, that kind of thing. And so from a analytics standpoint, the confidence, you, you didn't go and figure anybody does, has had to do this, this type of statistical analysis in the past. You, you develop a, a confidence factor around that. Well, our, my confidence has been next to zero on a lot of those lines. So what we do then is we literally, we look down and look at the revenue source, we look at what we know about the revenue source, where it's at, and we, and we build our own kind of confidence around what that number is. And it really is, we try to make it a scientific wild guess instead of just a wild guess. We really try to hone in as best we can and we're going to develop better models. But all that to say, our modeling will get better and better, especially on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we'll probably, we'll try to do the same. It, it really just depends.
We just need to be careful because the historical really, it, it makes a difference. And so we can develop the secret decoder ring that shows where the transfers happen so that you can make that correlation. And basically, as we're looking at the new ones, you do the adjusted historical based on where we've moved stuff. So I think if we could do that, it would be.
Doing that in Excel spreadsheet is difficult. I mean, it just, it gets really convoluted and when you start adding numbers in, in places and you remember to take them out somewhere else, it starts to look like spaghetti, which is why I said that in my experience, the best method for, for tracking all that is literally taking notes and writing them in your budget book and saying, okay, this is what happened here. And then just carrying that forward with you over time. But I'm happy to do whatever we can figure out that will work.
Pivot tables are wonderful.
Pivot tables are the way to go.
Yeah.
We just, you know, we just can't get rid of the stop, that's it.
No, no, no. I do not operate on a philosophy of people not being replaceable because we can all get hit by a bus tomorrow, so.
But I, I do like your, your notes. That's the way to go.
Yeah. Well, I mean, for everybody, not just me to take notes, but like everybody to take notes and I will, you know, mine will be preserved in Excel, but when I take notes on those, those.
Yeah, but the thing is, is our, no, our books are only good for.
Right, right. But these, my Excel files get, they, after we get done with the budget process, I make those available to council.
Sounds good.
So you can go back and look at the spreadsheets. I know we've got some people in here who like to crunch data, you can go do that to your heart's content. So just some ideas, potential service level adjustments. I, I told you there's none in here and these aren't things I'm asking for. These are just, again, ideas, observations, whatever you want to call them. We are, we just brought up C E D C or are in the process of doing that. At some point, we probably will want to have a, a trained economic development director that's out there helping us with those incentives and putting together packages and marketing the city, et cetera. A tourism director, depending on kind of what that vision and future that you want for Castroville is, perhaps a tourism director would be appropriate at some point in time. Additional labor in police, parks, streets, elsewhere. Certainly, there's, you could state that our, our PD doesn't have enough officers, you could state that our parks could use a few more crew, our streets could use a few more crew. It all depends on how much you're willing to pay. People, I'm always real nervous about adding them because once you add them, you almost never, they're very difficult to get rid of because I don't think anybody likes firing anybody, right? Or doing risks, reduction in force is the techn, the technical term, the term they use. New streets and equipment, specifically, I, I was thinking of an asphalt zipper. The last two cities I've worked in, we've been able to go and get one of these. I find them to be, they're kind of like bucket trucks and some of those other things I talk about, they're just really useful tools. What an asphalt zipper is, it's made, this specifically is a, a company that produces something called that. I don't know if they have a competitor really because I think it's a copyrighted or not copyrighted, trademarked or whatever, but.
Patented.
Thank you, patented, patented piece of equipment. What it does is it, it mills in place your road, it can do it at different depths and you push it along with a, a front end loader. So you have to make sure you have a front end loader that's big enough to push whatever size machine you get, they come in different sizes. But I found them to be incredibly useful because they're not, they're not technically difficult to operate. Like if you have someone who knows how to run a back cut or a front end loader, it's just pushing this thing along and getting the dot, getting it dialed in, they'll train the person how to use it, but basically allows you to establish some really good base in places. And I say it's inexpensive, I can't remember the, the cost, but we'll say it's four hundred thousand dollars. But as street equipment goes, it's not a maintainer, it costs one point two million or whatever. That's why, that's why I'm saying it's relatively expensive because you, generally, if you have a, a front end loader big enough, then that's your only expense is this zipper and the time it takes to push it. That's the first step in being able to maintain your own roads, in my opinion. Again, just ideas. I'd love to hear your thoughts and ideas as far as other potential service level adjustments, things you would like to see in this current budget. Keeping in mind however, that anything we add from this point going forward reduces our ability in some respects to do two things. Keep the property tax rate at an acceptable level, I'm going to use that broad term because acceptable could mean something different to each one of you. And be able to issue additional debt, do other, other projects, right? And I'm going to caveat that because issuing debt really is dependent on, I mean, your, your INS rate does not count towards the rollback rate. I'm going to talk about that in a second. So capital funding, I told you I wanted to build in the potential for it, this is how that potential exists. This is where, if anybody gets lost as I talk about this, please just raise your hand. But the idea, my thought process for issuing capital funding, if we were to go issue debt, is that general fund and utility fund, utility fund, well, general fund is always going to be tax supported, that means the tax rate supports it. The utility fund, anything that issues is going to be rate supported, the rate will support it. Again, caveated in that when you go and issue utility fund debt, it is cheaper for cities to issue it with what is called a tax pledge, meaning that you as a council understand that the rate is sufficient to pay for it, but in order to get a better rate in the market, you are pledging that if the worst, something crazy happens and your utility rates can't pay for that debt, you're willing to go raise your taxes in order to, to issue it. So that's called tax pledge. That's the way all GOs, general obligation bonds and city, uh, city's certificates of obligation, they all have that tax pledge. So it's, that is a, anybody who sells municipal debt in the market pretty much has that tax pledge with it. Otherwise, you're paying a significantly higher rate for that, for those borrowed funds. And I apologize because I, I couldn't get this to print and I don't know if it's because we had it open on three machines or what, but I will, this will be available to you to look at and if anybody wants it printed, just let me know and I'll print off a copy and have it. Because I see her furiously running those. What happened? So both, the, the concept is that both, if we, if we were to issue any kind of new debt, both of these funds would then pay for that debt service with the fund balance reserves. So both have very healthy reserves, which is why I was saying, you're actually in a great position in that respect because you can go out and issue some debt and not have to raise rates or, or property taxes significantly because you've got this, these funds. You could use that money to pay basically the debt service, pay your cash down until you get to that one hundred and twenty days of reserve, basically. And then at that point, you would start raising rates. Or you could do a convo, which is what our, I can already tell you because I've worked with the guy, our financial advisor would recommend and, and the guys, the consultants that are doing our cost of service, so you now will probably recommend the same thing. They will say something along the lines of, well, you should make some subtle changes now because nobody wants to be surprised in three or five years with a big rate change. So make incremental changes now, but you won't have to make nearly as big ones if you use this, this cash on hand. And frankly, I'm excited about that because you, your options are, you, you've got significant ability because of the amount of cash you're sitting on. So I didn't put how much your fund balance reserves were, I meant to put this, this amount in there and I didn't have time. But utility fund, our general fund, we already talked about, the cash reserves are, just go back up. Right there, three point one billion. And I think your utility fund reserves, do you remember or do you have it? I don't want to say, I'm, I want to say a number, but I know they have fewer days in operating because they have a higher operating expense, but they also have a large, they, they have a larger fund balance. So three point one for, for general fund.
Three point seven.
And three point seven for utility. So what does that buy you? Go ahead.
Let's, well, general fund plus percent dollars.
Yeah, that's just screwed up. I, I can't edit it. So that's what I'm saying, I intended to put dollars in there, I intended to put what your amounts were, the amounts are three point one million in cash sitting on hand. Not, not all of it's available to spend if you want to maintain a hundred and twenty days, right? But a lot of it is because you have three hundred and ninety-eight days. So roughly two thirds of that money is money that's available to spend, a two million dollar for a year, right? Utility fund, you have three point seven?
Yeah.
That's what he said, yeah. Three point seven?
Yeah.
So again, they have a higher daily cost so that you're not going to have quite as much to spend there, but you still have a little over a million, I think is the last time we did it because your, your river busts like six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
To kick off.
So we've already agreed to spend that unless we pare this old back. So that really only leaves about three or four hundred thousand dollars left that you can spend before you start getting into that hundred and twenty day reserve. But point is, you have cash and if, especially if you repay that six hundred that you're spending, you have, depending on how much debt you issue, you have a year, two, three years of debt service. It all depends on how much is issued. So let's get into how much it costs to issue debt. So right now, current market, these are conservative numbers, so I fully anticipate when we go out, if we were to go out for bond, we would get a better number than this, but this is good to use for budget purposes. A million dollars of debt is going to cost you roughly seventy-two thousand dollars a year on a twenty year note. Twenty year payoff, seventy-two thousand dollars a year to pay off a million dollars. One penny of property tax right now, if you just looked at, the way I figured this, because I think it's the best way to figure it basically, you take the amount of funds that you got current year, how much did you actually make? And then you divide by your rate, fifty cents. So you just say, if we got one point two million dollars, take one point two million dollars and divide by fifty, not fifty cents, fifty, right? And that tells you how many pennies, how much, how many dollars per penny. So dollars per penny is roughly twenty-two thousand dollars. What does that mean? It means that for every million dollars of debt, and this is just on the property tax side, on the utility rate side, it'll be different, right? Because now we're talking about rates, not, not, not taxes. The tax rate per million issued is about three point oh three two seven cents, about one, three and one third penny per million of issued. Now, the good news is, on the general fund side, I don't see the need to issue a ton of that because you're talking about streets and parks and facilities. On the facility side of things, I think we're pretty good. We don't need to go and build another bunch of new buildings, we don't need to do a bunch of expansions. At some point, at some point in the future, maybe, if that's something you're desiring to do, build a new, we talked about building, building a police station or doing a new kind of complex, whatever, at least I've heard those talks. But you don't have a huge facility need as, as I, from my perspective. You do have, so you have a parks master plan that's being put together and you have, certainly has some street needs and we have a whole streets kind of plan and, and approach to that. So one of the things I will be doing in the month of July is I'm going to put together a survey that will go out to each of you, it will go out to some of your constituents, it will go out to the, will go out to the public at large and it will go out to all of our appointed boards and commissions. And it will, it will have a listing, I'm going to basically do some forced ranking and there's a lot of different things the survey will cover, but more or less it's going to look at capital investment and it's going to ask the public and your input on what you think is important, on what ideas, you know, what, what types of amenities you'd like to see and then what you're willing to pay for them, you know, whether or not a tax, because you ask someone for a dream list, if they don't think they have to pay for it, they'll ask for all of it, right? But if you start to put it in perspective and say, okay, now this is going to cost this, now how important it is. So how important is it to you? So I'm going to ask those types of questions. That survey, I hope will be ready, not next week, but the week after. So it'll be in the month of July, we'll do it through August. Idea being that by September, we will all be in a really good position to have some thorough dialogue about what is the level of capital investment that the community one wants, that you want, that, and then what is it going to take to support it? So we'll, I, I'm hoping to be in that position. In the meantime, the biggest piece that we need to do is the mission, vision, values. I cannot stress how important it is to me from, as your advisor, if you will, to know or have a, a pretty good idea of what your vision is for the future. Because again, absent that, absent a concept of what we're trying to drive towards, I really can't advise you to my best, the best of my ability. And I'll just poke at one thing, for instance, manufacturing and light industrial and business expansion here, I have zero clue, no idea at all what your level of tolerance is or no idea at all what your level of tolerance is or desire for business improvement. Expansion, manufacturing, types of jobs, what types of jobs, what types of businesses? What type, is it manufacturing, is it heavy, is it light? Is it mostly sale? I have no idea. So these are things that we need to talk about. And the more you can help me understand what's appropriate for Castroville, and I know that you won't have all the answers. You want to talk to your constituents. You're going to want to go home and talk to your spouse and significant other to find out, well, what do they think? And so I need that kind of feedback and we're going to work on that over the next three budget workshops. My intent is to hone in on that vision. So tonight, we're actually going to do a little bit of that. But before we do that, we're going to continue this conversation. Are there any comments or questions? Yes?
Question. I just want to double click on this one. So the numbers here, maybe I'm just dense, they don't make total sense to me. So the one penny of property tax is roughly, so one penny of property tax, how do you define that?
Meaning, for every penny that you assessed, you have a 50 cent rate. For every penny that you assess, you get $22,000 in revenue. And then if you want to go borrow a million dollars, you're going to have to pay the bank $72,000 a year. Well, how much debt, how much tax would you have to levy to pay for that million dollars? Well, it's around 3.27 cents. And that goes back to what we were saying before. Like your tax rate right now is a little over three cents. Why is that? Because your tech, your debt service rate for the general fund is 1.1. So you see the math works, I mean, in that respect. You're actually a little bit higher if you get like 1.7.
You need to raise property taxes four pennies to...
To pay for a million bucks.
Pay for a million bucks.
And if you want to issue $5 million. Oh, that's the other thing, I think I cut myself short. The, so the financial advisor is more than likely going to recommend that you look at two-year tranches and try to stay under $10 million. The reason you stay under $10 million is it's another, and that may not be a problem at all for any of you in this room because you may not have any desire to issue more than that. But as a city, if you stay under that $10 million threshold, you can issue what's called bank qualified. And it's just another way of reducing the cost of that issuance and make, getting a little more attractive rate. So everything we can do to make that, those rates as low as possible, one, allows you to maximize how many dollars you can grow and also minimize how much you're paying for those dollars in the form of a rate or in the form of a... So he'll say, try to keep it less than 10 million and don't issue more, don't issue every year. Go issue every two years. So figure out what you're going to spend on the general fund side over the next two years. Well, I would believe it's possible for us to spend $5 million over the next two years in the general fund. How did I get to that number? $2 million on streets, half million on parks. That's too much money on streets, fine. A million and a half on streets, a million dollars on parks. That's too much money? Okay, fine. A million on streets, a million on drainage and half a million on parks. There's a lot of, my point is, I don't have enough data to advise you on how you're going to spend this money in a way that would appease both you and the constituents and maintain a rate that, that's what we're going to get to. And that's why I want to do the operations, partly laziness on my part, I guess, because I didn't want to, I want to do the operations budget first. It's the easiest part. Let's get that out of the way, let's get it done. And let's really do the heavy lifting on the capital improvement side. So I'm trying to set us up for success in that respect over the next couple of months.
I think that's the right way to do it. And getting into the mindset of really separating out what is utility, what is, what is the enterprise fund and what is the general fund? That took me a while to get to that point because I kept thinking, well, we've got this extra money over here, we've got to put it into, you know, utility enhanced, but basically to create more reliable utilities. But when you separate it off like that, it really helps guide your thinking, helps guide your speaking, your planning toward that.
I'm sorry, let me think about this, in terms, think about it this way. Your general, and I'll probably put some more slides in here for the next month. And I'm going to, I'm eager to hear from you all what other ways you'd like to see this data, what other additional information might you want to see? I can put it in here. We'll breeze through the ones we've already been through and then focus on the ones that you asked for. So if you have some thoughts afterwards, you want to email me, I'd love to hear that. So, because I don't want to, I want to give you what you need rather than what I think you need. But thinking about this on a debt service, so how much did we say that we had in fund balance, Phil, for the general fund?
1.3 million.
No, no, no.
No.
3.152.
Yeah, 3.152 million. Thank you, Sheena. So of that, how much is available for debt service?
I just want you to be a little bit more precise, please.
You really want me to go there?
So of that, how much is available for debt service?
Two...
Two and change.
Yep.
Right? Good enough. So two and change. So let's just say it's 2.1, just for easy math, because that's divisible by seven. So if you were to go issue $3 million in debt service, how much would you owe per year? It's 72,000?
Make me do math now.
$210,000 less a year.
Yeah, it's 210, but we're just going to be using round numbers, $210,000 a year. You have 2.1 million. How many years can you pay on that debt service before you have to pay?
I know, I know.
Yes, Phil? Yes? How many? What?
10.
10. There's two of laughter. So 10 years.
You really expected us to tell you?
Yeah, I want to hear. So, but some people at home might not, there might be a sixth grader watching these. They're trying to keep up. So, so 10 years. Now, obviously, we're not going to issue only $2.1 million over the next 10 years. You're going to have other debt service levels probably. And I've already told you that you probably want to issue more than that because you're going to issue every two years. So it's not 10 years, it's five years if you did 4.4 million. Does that make sense? But my point is that you really are in an enviable position in that respect in that you have a lot of cash sitting there. And that's kind of part of my master plan is, let's put together an exciting list of projects that the community can get behind without having to, and that's why I told you, I think I can actually use, you don't want to raise rates and taxes, it makes it really hard. If you never want to raise rates and taxes, it makes it really hard. But if you can commit to, well, not raising them a lot or by, you know, by a ton right away or a ton later, if we can get what is a sensible plan together, I think it is very doable for the city to reinvest in itself at this stage. The same is true on the utility fund side to a certain extent. It's all going to sit around what that transfer was and what it will be. And to the extent that what it will be is less than what it was, so there's a delta, they can put that money towards annual debt service. If, for instance, they were paying us $850,000 and now they only have to pay us $750,000, there's $100,000 towards debt service. That's a little over a million dollars in issued debt that they can pay on forever because that was money they were transferring at every single year. And now they don't have to do it anymore. On the other hand, however, if the transfer, if it equates to something more than what they were transferring, that's going to reduce their ability to do debt service without doing a rate increase. And that's why I was trying not to commit to early on because I just don't know. I'm waiting on the consultants to really tell us, here's where you stand. And I'll know more. I know what my cost is and I've got to give them that data back on our service side, but like the payment and the taxes, I really don't know what that number is. I've got to find out what that is. So I wanted to show you this. This is looking, just, and forgive me because I don't want to patronize, but I want to make sure that everybody understands how this works. So up on the upper, the blue line running across the middle from the left to the right, upper right-hand corner, that's your assessed property values, all right? And right now, our assessed property valuation was $224,000, $147,073. And for the listening public, no, we did not get $224 million. That's the assessed value. That's what all the homes and businesses are worth. We then assess a tax on top of that. And no, we didn't get 50 cents times that, unfortunately. That is, there are a lot of breaks that come out of that. There's ag exemptions and homestead exemptions and all these other things that come out of that number. But 224, 147 was what our base was. Our INS rate, that's the interest and sinking rate, this is the red line, lower right-hand corner, is at around three cents. And I'm using big numbers, I'm not using exact numbers, just big numbers. It's around three cents. Our O and M, our operation and maintenance, is around 47 cents, making for a total rate of 50. That's that, 50 cents, that's the rate. So after this next year, they're going to assess our properties again. And what will happen, barring nothing else, our assessed value is going to go up. Now, that number is real, the 254, 873, 895. That is their best estimate as of today of what our assessed valuation will be. That will cause, our INS rate will go down for two reasons. One, because it's going to take less of a rate because you have more money. It takes less of a rate to get the same amount. Plus, we're paying it off every year. It's just going to, it's always going to get down by a little bit marginally because we're paying it off. But it's also going to go down because the rates, the amount of money that you're assessing against is going up. The same thing happens on the other end of that seesaw, that O and M, that rate goes down too. It's at 47. It will automatically go down to whatever is actually needed to produce the same amount of cash. That's what's called the effective rate. So the effective rate, this is the rate that it takes to get the exact same amount of cash that you got last year. And that's the starting place for all cities across the state of Texas. We all start at that same rate, that effective rate. The city or the state has capped us to no more than a 3% increase over that effective rate. Or else you can be subject, you won't automatically be subject, you can be subject to a rollback election. They aren't calling it rollback anymore and they aren't calling it effective rate anymore. And they aren't calling, they're calling it like a bunch of other things. No new tax rate, I can't remember, the state managed, there's a bunch of different terms that they now call those things. And I have a hard time keeping up. But bottom line, I want you to understand the relationship between that assessed property value. And I've already kind of underscored the fact that that is not the tax assessor appraisal district. They're doing their job as far as the state's concerned. That's what the state has told them they must do. Now granted, your property tax rate is going to be based off of that and we all will decide a course of action that the city needs to take. And it's our job to communicate through our citizens to understand, why are we saying it needs to be whatever the rate is in the future? We need to justify that both to ourselves and to the public at large. And I think if we do a good job of that, I've never had an issue, knock on wood, where citizens have got, there's always one or two, right? But I've never had a major issue with citizens coming in and just all up in arms simply because if you communicate what you're doing and why you're doing it and what you're doing, what you're doing is in concert with the feedback you're getting from your community, you're going to be okay. You know what I mean? So that's all I'm saying about that.
Question for you.
Yes?
And that's a very good slide, I like that. So basically, the value of the property in Castro went up 10%.
13, 13.
13%. But our revenue of taxes will not go up 13%. Because our O and M will reduce.
Yeah, our, so our tax revenue will go up by whatever or down or whatever. It will do whatever we do based on our rate. And we have not chosen a rate, right? So what happens automatically, because like I said, everything resets the effective rate. The state makes you calculate that.
Right.
And I say that every city starts there because generally, that's where every city starts. Almost no city says, no, we don't need as much money as we needed last year. Now granted, sometimes sales taxes play a part in this. If you have a huge, if, because like I said, that mix between sales tax and property tax is different.
Just property tax.
Right. Well, it depends on the city. So some places really do, they have huge sales tax influxes and they don't have to have, they can actually afford the lower of the property tax rate. But most cities don't. Most of them are in a situation like we're in where we depend on that money to operate. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, Phil, but...
Will, will our property tax revenue go up 13%?
Only if you keep it, if you kept it, if you kept it at 50 cents, it would.
Okay.
It would.
But if we keep it at the effective rate, which would mean it would not be, it would drop less than 50%, so at the end, the balance is out.
Right. And actually, I'm going to talk about your options right here. And I think this is the last slide before the...
I want to call out one other thing or clarify, make sure that I understand this properly. So with that total increase in overall, like our all-in property...
Assess values.
Assess values, thank you.
13%.
Well, that doesn't, that is the increase when it goes, like say, there's no new properties added, no new anything. So in other words, if we add in another $100 million of new businesses, houses, whatever, that doesn't go toward that, that would be a net new on top of that. Is that correct? Because if you're, if you go through a time of rapid...
Well, that assessed value is a snapshot.
It's everything.
Yeah.
If you build another Walmart, it goes up.
Right. Yeah, that's all your, that's your entire, so they don't, the state doesn't break out new taxable value and say, you get the charge rate on that and you don't need more money. They lump it all together in your tax base, whether it's new property or old property.
But they only do that once a year. That's, I think that was during now and next year.
I want to be, I want to get more clear on that before, before, so between now and the next meeting or maybe now, yeah, between now and the next meeting, I'm going to talk about how the state treats your new taxable value and do they penalize you at all? In other words, are you allowed to just collect the old rate on that and not, and add it to? Because I do think it does. At least in the past, they treated that separately. But now, I'm really not sure.
We need to verify that because...
I will, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As you add additional facilities, you're going to add additional cost, additional road miles.
Yeah, they've got to treat it separately. They used to. I just need to find out how that's treated. So I, and this slide isn't updated. I actually did update it, but it didn't capture because I think he had it open while I was doing it. So I think I can, how do I close this? I may reopen, but basically, there's kind of three options. And that's pretty, it's pretty self-expansatory almost. A bunch of hidden slides. There are a bunch of slides you didn't see tonight because I thought, this is getting a little out of here. So there's basically three options. There's do nothing. So you don't do any new debt, you don't have major street repairs. I put major in there because in the past, you were doing street repairs. We could continue to do that, cash fund it. You'd end up with a lower rate because that's just, and I put 47 cents, but I had no idea, whatever that new lower rate would be. And you could continue to spend fundoffs that you have, right? But my, in my opinion, that's the road to nowhere because it's not sustainable. And part of, I think, good fiscal responsibility is trying to build a sustainable plan, something that is predictable and that people can, you can continue to make improvements and not just say, well, we're out of money, we spent it all. And we certainly aren't in that stage today. Preserve historic tax rate. And accommodates, misspelled it. Preserve historic tax rate. The idea there is, you're at 50 cents today. If you preserved it somewhere around 50 cents, you could do that because the INS portion of the rate does not count towards the rollback rate, okay? So we already know that the general fund doesn't need as much money as it needed last year because we moved some of those costs over. So as you, when you look at that, when you go back and look at that seesaw... If you stayed somewhere around that 50 cent, then you could realize the increase in the INS portion to be able to service debt rate. Now, you, again, we will get down to, I will actually have a proposal at the end of the day when we get, have to set our tax rate. One of the, two things. One, when we set that tax rate, I'm going to strongly encourage you to set a rate that's going to make your neighbor call you on the phone. Because that's the safest thing to do. It does not obligate us to that rate. You just set it at an arbitrary rate that's pretty high. You'll get some calls and you've just got to explain to them, we're not going to adopt that rate. That's just giving us a ceiling. Stay tuned, I'll tell you what the new rate is going to be.
In the past, we've always said, that's the highest rate we're considering.
You could say that.
That's how we've always set it in the past. This is the highest number we're going to consider. Nothing above that. Maybe something lower, but just a ceiling.
Right. And I would, yeah, so...
Just got to know where it is.
That, the tricky part of that rate is, I think there's going to be plenty, and this is what I was telling you before, there's going to be plenty of room in your existing rate because of some of your growth that you're seeing on the appraised value side, to be able to puff up that INS. The INS, as I said, it's going to fall on its own if you do nothing simply because you're paying some debt off. It's also going to fall on its own because it's, the rate does not have to be as high when you have a larger...
Assess value.
No, assessed value, I was trying to think of the mathematical term. So if you preserve that at three cents alone, you've already added some more INS. What I'm suggesting is, no, why don't you beef that up to 10 cents, whatever it ends up being, whatever that delta is between the current rate of 50 cents and whatever the new rate needs to be to reset the amount of money. I don't know if you're...
So you're saying that the INS is not limited?
Yeah, capture your, capture any increase. I'm not, and then the third option, which depending on, it's not complete heresy because it really depends on the level of support you get from the community and what they really want to do. If they want to do something really big and bold and go buy some land and plan for a big, what are we calling it? Complex, the...
Community center.
Community center complex. If that were really and truly something that grew some legs and people wanted to do, they could make that commitment in the form of a tax rate that helps to do that, right? So the third option is, well, you could increase it, you could actually increase the rate. So the third option is, well, you could increase it, you could actually increase the rate, and whatever it takes to accommodate whatever amount of debt you're issuing. But I think, given what I've seen, and what we're planning on doing in the general fund, without talking about some major project in the future, you're going to have enough room by simply trying to preserve what I'm calling historic rate. If you stay around 50 cents, or even just a little bit below that, you're going to have some money in your INS, some excess money in your INS. And that, coupled with your fund balance, will be enough to pay for, we'll see how many projects and how much it costs. The other thing is, keep in mind, if you do that this year, and then you do it next year, and you do it the next year, you're really going to be able to start to be able to do some projects and fund some things. So, it's a strategy I've used pretty much everywhere I've been. And generally, the community supports it, they understand, because they start to see actual results. They see their streets getting fixed, they see their parks getting invested.
What do you do? Are we going to have new definitions of debt that's going to affect the INS computations?
Yeah, it could. It depends on how we go to issue it, and I don't think it's going to, they almost never do a clawback, they're going to go backwards. So right now, we don't have to worry about it. Right now, we could go issue certificates of obligation, and what we can issue. The issue is, what the states, what Herb's referring to is, they're taking that debt, and they're trying to, and that's part of the reason it didn't pass this year, is there was a lot of back and forth, even among legislators. They're saying, well, wait, with some debt, you know, you don't want to take to the voters, like, you have to have it done. What if you have to have it done, and they don't support it? Where does that leave you? And so what they started to do is modify, okay, well, what do we consider safe debt? Okay, was that utility debt? Does that not get counted? So whatever amount you have in utilities that you were paying for at a general fund, which is something you can do, I've done in other cities, I don't advise it, but you can. You can help basically pay for their debt sometimes. But that wouldn't count against it. And anything you issue as a, take to the voters and have them vote on, well, that wouldn't count against it. So only the certificate obligations, and only those certificate obligations, which is all that, the only difference between a GEO, a general obligation, and a certificate obligation, is one was voted on by the public, and one wasn't. That's the only difference. So what they're saying is, only certificate obligations would count against you in your INS rate going forward, and only those certificate obligations that were for purposes that we felt like we really should have taken to the voters. We don't know what those are, but I don't think, Herb, that like, in the timeframe we're talking about, when we issue this debt, unless something changes in September, because he is talking about having this special, special scrawl for governors, that that will change. So we can do whatever we need to this year. Next year, we may have to think about it. The sad part is, the thing that legislature may or may not be thinking about, is that in a lot of communities where this would go uncontested anyway, because they're clamoring for it, because they need it, because they want it, and they're willing to pay the taxes. Now those same communities are being penalized, because they have to go to the voters and ask for something they're going to approve anyway. I don't know how, how many of those there are, but in those particular instances, the voters are going to have to pay for that election. And the elections are not cheap. We paid $10,000 this last election for the city council election, and that was with participation of the school district and others. If we had to do one by ourselves, do you know how much it would cost?
Seventeen, $20,000?
Probably.
Around $20,000?
Yeah.
So these cities, small cities, really small cities, are having to bear that burden, when they could be putting that money towards something else, like a half million dollars in debt, if they want to go issue more. So that's it. I understand kind of both sides of it, but I also think...
Well, the other thing, kind of following up to what the mayor was saying, Alsatian homes comes in. That's 1,000 homes.
Yeah.
280,000. That doubles our assess value.
That's right.
And so you have to be able to take care of that, those responsibilities. So yeah, there has to be something in there. So more news to come.
I'm just putting on break. So this is where I've built in a break, if we want to take one. It's mission, vision, value time, but I also, I didn't have a question slide, and I normally put a question slide. So let's talk budget real quick. Are there any things that you would like to see differently? Is there more information you'd like to be provided? Is there any format changes you'd like to see?
Yeah, that goes off pretty clear.
Deborah and Leroy have their pens ready.
I think there's a couple of things that we need to go back and clarify just a little bit more. I think that overall, you did a great job on that. I apologize, we have gone through item number five, discussion on proposed FY, oh no, that's...
Are we talking?
Yeah. Discussion on proposed FY '22 expense and revenues.
Are you finished with this? So you can turn the lights on?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to have your mission, vision, values.
Okay. Do you just want to take a break? Oh, no, I don't.
I'm good.
Bill has to get out of here as soon as he can.
Well, then let's move on to at six, what is that, 33, discussion on mission, vision, and values.
Yeah, I won't, I'll take as much time as you want to give me on this. And if you have, this is not the last call. Like I said, I'm desperate for your input, where the budget's concerned. If there's additional information you'd like, please, if you think of it, wake up in the middle of the night, and just send me an email or text me, and we'll have it for the next time. Because we do have two more budget workshops, just because. Now, they might be very short, but I just wanted to give us plenty of opportunity to talk about it. And this also gives, the viewers listening can be as feedback for you, and want to reach out to you, this gives them an opportunity to do it as well. All right. So we're going to breeze through some of these, because you've seen them several times now. But this is what we're talking about. It's our values, vision, mission, strategic objectives, and actions and KPIs. What are KPIs? Key performance indicators? I often forget what those mean. And then you can see, you know, there's a little bit of a definition of each of those, you know, what do we stand for, that's our values. Where are we going? What do we aspire to achieve? That's our vision. What do we do, and what we do it for, that's our mission, et cetera. So we talked about this before too, like, how does this break out? Who does what? Well, city council, you're actually responsible for most of it, you know. The strategic objective, all the way up to the values, that's really, although we are reflective of those values, our personnel, the people form opinions about the city based on the interactions with the city, with the employees every day. And I know our police chief, who stepped out, he's done an excellent job of reminding his officers of that, you know. They are basically marketing the city everywhere they go. They've got that stamp on their car, they've got the stamp on their uniform. Good, bad, or indifferent, they are representing the city in every interaction, and our employees are no different, the rest of our employees. And then the city, so the staff is responsible for the execution of the action.
Scott, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? I just want to put a quick pause on this, and wait for Herb to get back.
He's seen it all.
What's that?
He's seen it all.
Okay. If you want to review it with him, if you're cool with just going over the review, then that's fine.
That's not what we want, we need to go back.
Okay.
I want respectfully to rail this time too. But he and I can go over it later. I know he's seen all this, and you have too.
Yeah, and he had expressed the importance in that, and so I just wanted to make sure that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So what we're talking about, we're going to focus on those three areas, values, vision, and mission, how we do it, why we do it, and what we do. I forgot, I still had this in there. But kind of what is a mission, and this is that old, you know, army story of, go take that hill, you know, that's, that's the mission. We're going to go take that hill.
Scott, go take that hill.
That's right. Tell me which one, will you do it, sir? So this is a recap of what we did in that first day, that first retreat, first day of the retreat. The mission is what we do, we're doing what, for who, because. And I gave you kind of the example that Rowlett has, the city Rowlett provides an innovative, citizen-centered services that exceed the expectations of our residents, businesses, and guests. Our purpose is to serve. So they've got a lot of stuff around services, you may recall. We kind of came up with a little bit of a mission, preserve Castroville's rich culture, beautiful architecture, and natural environment, so that friends and family can continue to enjoy our unique, family-oriented Alsatian community. And this is, I think, a restatement of that. Preserve Castroville's rich culture, historic architecture, and natural environment, so that friends and family can continue to enjoy a true community, steeped with a pioneering spirit and camaraderie. So we felt pretty good about that a couple weeks ago. We've had some time to sleep about it, mull it over. My question for you is, and we're on mission, just, that's the only thing we've covered so far, Herb. My question to you all is, how do you feel about it today? Are you still in love with that mission statement? Is there anything here that's not being reflected? Anything that we do that's really paramount and important that we haven't even mentioned in that paragraph? I laugh, because those are pretty, that's pretty heavy.
Well, part of it is, go back one slide. It's there, but for instance, where you say, services that exceed the expectations from the city Rowlett, but then you also look at, you know, making Castroville a great place to live, work, and play. Well, that's really accomplished, and I go forward one slide. I would define that as a true community, even though it doesn't say it there, I know that's where, that's what a true community is. So in other words, we're not talking about...
It does actually say true community.
No, it says true community here, but it doesn't say parentheses, that means a great place to play and live and all of that. But it's there. So I mean, I like it.
And I think that we all realize that we have an opportunity to expand upon this in our, you know, so I think it's a good general summary.
In subsequent, so my goal is, once a year, we will look at these things. So once a year, during the budget process, we'll talk about this. Are we on target? Right? Any other thoughts, comments?
I still support that.
Herb?
Yes? Great.
Good. And although Todd's not here, I think he would have said about as much as he just heard.
More or less.
More or less, if that's possible. But no, seriously, I know that he talked about the Alsatian and including, not having Alsatian in there, because he wanted to include everyone. And I know that Herb hit on that point too, when we were in the retreat, that we want to be an inclusive community. Being Alsatian is a big part of that. And that's, that's reflected in that historic architecture, and the culture, and the pioneering spirit. All those things are, relate back to that Alsatian history, but it also relates back to all the other histories, and the new histories that are being made. Okay.
We're a long ways from that now.
So we're good with this, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
All right. Well, if you have any other thoughts, let me know. I'm not probably going to, I mean, the idea is that we'll tombstone this in the budget document in the future. You'll have to, obviously. So values. Until you make the unconscious conscious, it will direct your life, and you will call it fate. And that really is true in some respects, especially when you decide, you know, I don't think there's ever been, well, that's a pretty heavy statement too, but certainly, right now, the history that we are all living through, it is one of the most important times to decide what you believe in. Because there is an erosion of societal norms, there's an erosion of even our laws, and what we're seeing. And again, I'm not trying to speak for one side or the other. I think both sides, if you will, if you consider both sides, I couldn't make those comments and say that that's the case. Point is, for each one of us, it's truly important that we decide, what are those hills that we're willing to die on? What are our core values? The things that, no matter what the pressure is from the community, and what the pressure is from outside forces, these are the things we hold near and dear to our hearts. And that's what values are supposed to represent. So we talked about different, you know, we have three to five of them. They should be enduring, specific, not generic. This is Rowlett's again. They made theirs into an acronym, service people, integrity, responsibility, innovation, and transparency. And then they elaborated on each one of those to explain them to us, so that when we read them, we'd understand them. We don't have to do this, this is just one way to do it. This was from that survey that we did, this was just a survey of the council, but you can see, some of this has already been reflected in that mission. Historic was mentioned so many times. Pioneer, small town, community, family, peaceful, wonderful home. So all those things were mentioned, and some of those can be interpreted as values. So here's what we recapped is, I'm sorry, there's the values recap, but what we stand for, what we'll never compromise on, those are our core values. Aspirational, and kind of our ideal self, so these are things we aspire to be, that's, so you may not always be high integrity, you may not always be excellent customer service, or what have you, but those are the things that you want to try to achieve, those are aspirational. So the example, service, we value service, recognizing that each individual's situation is unique, we treat everyone with curiosity and respect. That was from Rowlett. So these are the, I believe, these are two attempts, yes. Day one recap, preservation of history, integrity, truth, competence, just kind of some ideas and thoughts we put out there. And then I believe our mayor helped us kind of steer that in this direction, just using kind of two different approaches. The word serve, stewards, empowering, responsible, visionary, and excellent. Am I attributing that correctly, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait. It's been too long. And then leadership, selflessness, fairness, respect, optimism, sacrifice, heritage, devotion. These were other kind of values and thoughts that were thrown out when we were talking about all of this.
And I did put, do you have the wording that I put on the other side of that, still?
I do, it's somewhere, I don't have it on this one.
Okay, no problem.
I can add it. It's in your, it's in, so I did tell you I was going to make that repository, and I did, and it's available to you, for y'all to look at, and it would be in there with that.
Okay.
I haven't added, was it you, Paul, that sent me a vision?
Recently, yeah.
Yeah, someone sent me, I think it was you, sent me a vision statement recently, and I haven't added that one yet. I need to add that.
Where is this repository?
It's in your...
So I checked the OneDrive.
Yeah, well, not OneDrive, that would be in, what is it, Teams.
So I don't, I'm not a large...
Your OneDrive will be the things that you save to OneDrive, so you, that's kind of yours, you add to that.
Yeah.
And you can certainly add stuff from Teams to that, but Teams is where this stuff is being stored.
Do each one of y'all have Teams?
I don't.
Yeah, it's, we can send out the link.
Okay.
It's on a SharePoint that's...
My mistake. All right. I thought you all had Teams access. All right. Well, you have a team, and we'll make sure you have access to it. That would be very helpful.
Yeah. Because I went looking, and I was like, I don't see it.
It's in a similar place to where the packets are, but we'll just send out a link for it.
Okay, thank you.
So it's appeared, the team is automatically being updated, the SharePoint is automatically updated by the Teams.
Okay.
Awesome. So it's on your SharePoint, Paul.
Okay.
Which is where your, yeah, where your packets are. So just thinking about values, has anybody had any further aha moments? Things that you think are missing from those lists, or a different way to say it? The concept is, I want you to understand how seriously I take this. Once we adopt these, I'll be working with our staff to reinforce them. Because at the end of the day, this will, you know, we want to provide, reinforce and provide people the sense of, this is Castroville. And the extent that we aren't meeting it, we want to be aspirational and try to meet it. And then to the extent that we need to do other things, and I think I even had a pretty candid discussion about the word excellent. Now excellent, that's a very high bar. That's better than good, right? It's even better than great. It's excellent. And sometimes excellent can be expensive. Sometimes it's just an attitude change, right? But my point is, words matter, and what we choose matters. And I want us to make sure we're choosing things that truly are things that we care about, and we want to adhere to.
Cool. Anything else on that? Did everybody get in? Do we have values from everybody? Were we missing anybody?
I don't know that, honestly, I don't know that I got values from a whole lot of folks, but I got, we did that as a group exercise.
Yeah. It was the next thing.
I really, the vision was what I was, what I got. The mission and values we did as group, the vision is what I was really pushing on. Each one of the person is proud. All right, well, again, we're gonna revisit this at the next budget cycle, but if there's anything else or budget workshop that you think of or a specific value that you think embodies Castroville in some way that isn't reflected previously?
Thank you.
And this is the last item that we're gonna talk about, which is vision. From Proverbs, where there is no vision, the people perish. And you have two people comparing their vision statements. One's kind of bragging about how long his is and everything, and the other one says, our vision is only two words long. We want our employees to remember.
Be amazing.
Right, be amazing. I can't, that's the actual vision statement from a company. So it's clear, specific, compelling picture of what the organization will look like at a specific time in the future. Implice key metrics that define success. So at the end of the day, you know, we're gonna, once we establish where we're going, we're gonna have to establish guideposts along the way to make sure we're hitting those. And it's course corrections, right? Everybody goes through this. I fully anticipate there'll be some course correction, corrections along the way. But the more we can build, the better we can define the vision, the better we can build those measuring sticks and make sure that everybody's on the same page. The more loosely it's defined, the less accurate you're gonna be. You're just, you're not gonna be as well, you're not gonna know, are we within the bounds or not, right? Some more guidelines. Some recap. This is Rowlett's vision. It's a well-planned lakeside community of quality neighborhoods, distinctive amenities, diverse employment and cultural charm. Rowlett, the place to live, work and play. We talked about how that's very ununique, that last, there's a lot of cities that are laying claim to that's where you live. There's about 18 million different ones I've heard said, but at least 100 anyway, of different ways to say live, work and play. And it doesn't mean that you can't use it, but understand that the part that precedes it probably is the most important part of that, right? And that is really what they're defining. They're actually saying quality neighborhoods. So they've gone to great extent to define what is quality neighborhood in their code of ordinances and other places. Distinctive amenities. Well, what's a distinctive amenity? Well, they've actually gone through process of identifying that. And I would do the same here with you, depending on what we are able to do. So our comp plan vision, what it states is where history shapes the future. So we already have that nod of a mission statement. You see it again reflected here. All that tells me as someone that's not originally from here is that history really and truly is very important to this community. And I've said before, I now tell people, anytime they ask me, well, where do you live? Where are you from? I tell them Castroville is the most historic place in Texas. Because we have 244 historic registered places, more than any other community in Texas, believe it or not. There's a lot of historic places, like you think of the Alamo in San Antonio, not as historic as Castroville. We have more historic places per capita, per square mile, per any way you want to look at it. So certainly we can hang our head on that. So what is our vision for the future? And then this is how we put it all together. So throw that back at you. I'm gonna, this is a homework assignment I've given before, but I'm gonna give it again. I know that you've written me some excellent business statements. For those of you who haven't, because I've got some that are just kind of, they're not, I think, I think Paul, we kind of recognize, I think Paul won the award, although he had some stiff competition.
He wrote a book.
Because he really took that to heart and he was an imaginative kind of walk through Castroville in the future. And that's what I, the close, and I know that we're, Paul are blessed in different ways. And some of us are more creative than others and have the ability to kind of be more creative in the writing sense too. But the best you can, the more you can do that for yourself, really think about the future and what you'd like it to be like. Not what you think it will be, but what you would like it to be like. What elements, and what it will do is more likely, your mind will naturally go to the things that you hope are still there. So it could be the regional park. That could be a big part of your imagination and what you see in the future. It could be the Alsatian homes, that you're still home to 244 unique, I mean, that may be part of your, that thing. And that would speak to back to that preservation. We've already talked about it as part of our mission, but that would be part of our vision as well. That in the future, 50 years from now, we'll still be able to say, we are a community with 244 historic places. Why is that important? Well, because, guess what? It may take some grants in the future to make that happen. There may be, not everybody can afford to maintain these old houses the way that they need to be maintained. The city may actually have to invest in that and the community will have to be behind that. And if we start that process now, it'll be a lot easier to do it in the future. Than if you just wait until there's a problem and say, oh, we need to do this. You're gonna get pushback. I see, do you have something to say? Okay. You look like you were wanting to say. At least I interpret it that way.
I'll say something if I want to.
Is 244, where do you get that number from?
I don't know. How many, how many do we have? I've been making it up.
Well, so it's 90. 90 on the, about 90.
Buildings and.
96 original historic structures.
96 that are registered?
Ask the surveyor.
Yes, that are registered?
That was also the former chairman of the historic.
Okay, so 96. I've been making it up. I thought someone told me that that was the number, but it doesn't matter. 96, it's still.
Those are the official ones that were under the 1968 survey.
Right.
69 survey, yeah.
That's the 96 you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more the word.
And there are more there, they just aren't on the, on the survey, yeah.
Well, the more recent one, I think it had maybe not as historic. I think there was more on the mull.
Sure. Well, it's a moving, it's a moving window.
Well, that's the thing. Yeah, it depends on your period of significance, right? Cause if it's, 1960 is a period of significance. If you went 1960 backward.
50 years after, 50, 60 years later, we've got more historic structures.
But Scott, always remember, never let the truth get in the way.
Right. Hey, Phil, I'm right there with you. I don't know, no one's ever.
I'm gonna use your number from now on. Scott mentioned the other day.
It's like the ghost hunters. Don't let the truth get in the way.
Yeah, until my family comes to visit, because they're all history buffs. Where are all these places at?
Well, after I see 96 of my father, I wanna see the other 100.
We have more, now this is also fact. We have more historic markers in Medina County than any other county in Texas. And that is a fact.
I did not know that.
So. So. Mostly because of a former mayor called Bob Hancock. So. Did what?
There was a sigh or something over there.
Are you dead?
I'm gonna say, oh, is that the chairman, right, of the historic?
He used to be the chair, yes. And when a lot of those came in under him, so yes.
So back to just do that vision. If y'all can help me, help yourselves, really go through that for thinking about that in the future. What will do, what it will do is help me better define kind of that vision. But absent from that, the other thing you do that's equally important is simply think about it from a strategic standpoint. What do you want to see for Castroville in the future? If you can't, maybe you're not as creatively minded and that certainly there's left and right for any people out there. Think about it from a strategic standpoint and think about, do you want fiber to the home everywhere? That's something that I would like to see frankly for Castroville. I think broadband access is very important. So in the future, I'd love to see that there is high-speed, reliable internet everywhere in Castroville. There's no one without it, right? And beyond that, I really wanted better to find that as that's fiber to the home. It's not aerial, it's not, it's fiber to every home in Castroville. But what are the other vision points? Is there manufacturing here? I mentioned that as a kind of example earlier, but seriously, you gotta think about it. What types of manufacturing from a strategic standpoint do you see being of value to the citizens of Castroville? What types of jobs do you see as being valuable? I think the city needs to make a decision whether it's going to be a town that has a diverse economic base and part of that's based in manufacturing, or whether it's gonna be a tourism centric type community or a little bit of both or what have you. You have a tremendous opportunity from a tourism standpoint. There's a lot that can be done and that will greatly help reduce the stress on the property tax rate to maintain, continue to maintain the areas of all the amenities and that sort of thing. As happy as we are about Alsatian Oaks, when you look at a 50-year timeframe, that does nothing for us. 20 years from now, it's gonna be fantastic. For the next 20 years, it'll be added, it'll double our tax base and there'll be a fantastic addition. But in the long term, past that 20 years, you're maintaining all those roads. You still have to provide police, you still have to provide emergency services of some kind, whether it's the fire department that you have or the ESD. So all of those are needs in the future. Now granted, when you start with a higher quality product to begin with, the need to maintain it is reduced. I mean, we're dealing with some of that now. We've got other subdivisions that were not as high of quality and they are more expensive to maintain today than these will be in the future. Does that make sense?
No, the body's standing around.
So. Just think about that, develop a strategic.
As a format, to me, listen to you, it's almost like bulleted items. Not just, but ideas, but short-term and long-term. Is that right?
That, yes.
And then put as you get in a document.
Coming from an engineer, it makes a lot of sense that, yes, that's perfect.
Make a list.
Paul's gonna do a story.
And you're gonna do a list.
Quantified checklist. Any, there's a.
And we'll try to meld them together.
So one of the things that we didn't do is a personality test. I told you that, I've done that with every council I've worked with. I don't know what it would reveal here. I've taken to any of them, they generally end up in the same place described different ways. But it would, it would reveal the ones that would be naturally good at what I'm asking you to do versus making a bulleted list. And either one of those is fine with me, because both of them help us get to the same place, which is helping me understand, well, what are the long-term objectives that you want to try and see the city achieve? Whether or not it's in your tenure. What you really hope for to see in Castroville. So if you can give me that, I'm gonna give that to you as homework, if you don't mind, indulge me. You can get it to me before the next meeting or during the next meeting. Either way is fine.
Before the next council meeting, before the next workshop session?
Yes, because they're both the same. The next workshop will be at the next council meeting. We are not gonna have any more special call meetings for this budget process that I'm aware of. We might have one for capital at some point in August or September. But the rest, this is the only special call. The other two workshops will be at the council meetings. And I don't know if we've decided whether we're gonna try and start early or just do it at 5:00 and like, it's up to you all.
We can start at 4:00 here. We can continue on afterwards if we have to.
I just, again, I don't wanna impose on your time. I wanna be respectful of that. I know that many of you still work for a living and.
Well, we're talking about next Tuesday, one week from the day, right?
Yes.
So it should already be on your calendar.
It is.
There you go.
Since that's 20 years, I'm optimistic.
But is it 4:00?
Well, that's the question. If y'all can meet at 4:00, we can start up.
Oh, yeah.
And at least get an hour in.
We can do whatever we need to do.
We want to record council meeting. If we need, we can always go back and.
So 4:00.
If that works with y'all's schedule?
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna do.
You okay with me?
I can go with 4:00.
I can be here.
Till midnight?
I really hope not.
You know, I kinda might ask you about when it's gonna end. You're like, boy, I really hope not. Boy, I really hope not.
Because I don't, now this time I talked the entire time, but.
I'm just joking.
I try not to talk the entire time. I believe on your SharePoint, one of the other things you can look at from crins and giggles is your upcoming meetings. One of the things that the mayor had asked for was a list of our pending list, which is what we talked about when we were in our employee, our staff meetings, before and after the council meetings. We plan for each meeting, right? So all that, what we currently have and are thinking about, that's all in that pending list and that's available to you on your SharePoint.
So I got it to. OneDrive.
No, I copied it. I copied ours and I stuck it over there. So they have a copy of it. Now ours, we're gonna work off of, I'll have to refresh theirs from time to time. But for the next three months or so, you've got what we're anticipating we're bringing to you to talk about.
Big stuff.
And the reasoning behind that is to make sure, because I know that each of you are pushing on different initiatives, which is fantastic, just making sure that you understand what our timing is. And if there's any kind of discussion around that, we can have that discussion. It's really about open communication.
You're, like, what you're wanting to talk about, that community complex, Herb? The community complex? I would really, I have no control over when you and Mayor decide to bring it forward, but I have told the mayor, I'd really like to have that in August, September, when we're talking about all the other projects. Let's do that in concert with that, because it would make sense. And you'll be, we'll all be better prepared to kind of talk about it in context with all the other. Anything else like that? I mean, if you're having thoughts about different things you'd like to see discussed and you don't see on that list, that's a good time to tell me. So if you, again, last kind of repetition reminder request, if you think of anything else in the budget you'd like to see, what I'm going to make available to you at this stage is this workshop. So you'll have, all of the slides from this workshop will be on your SharePoint tomorrow. I'm still not opening up the Excel sheets, because we've got a lot more. It's all there, but there's still numbers that are moving, depending on the feedback I get from you. So I don't wanna, I really don't wanna start sharing that until we lock in something. It may be before we actually adopt the budget. I won't wait until that, that long. But I just wanna be more comfortable, one, with our revenues and two, knowing that we've covered our bases on our expenditures. So things like y'all brought up tonight, would you like me to bring back various proposals on what the retirement system, the retirement investments would look like? How they would impact? I can just bring you numbers.
I know we discussed it when we were, when we were looking at the different candidates and everything.
I know, I specifically requested it.
Yes, I know you did. And then you turned around and said, let's put it off, that way we can do it for all and not just you.
I think that the mayor said that and I said, okay. Cause I wanted a job, but it's all good.
I'm just looking at that, cause I mean, we always have our people are getting care dangled in front of them and we've got a good crew. Yeah.
Sure.
You know, just, just to see our different options out there to.
Yeah, I can put together at least the numbers, like in a slide and show you, well, this is what the cost would be, without folding it into the budget. And that's generally how I do SLAs, service level adjustments. I'll have a slide or two on each one. So if there's any others you all wanna look at, we can do as well.
I think that, so I believe the same as the rest of council, we need to take care of our folks. Let's, let's maybe rely on you and the department heads to determine what that looks like. So how, how are we taking care of them? What is their level of satisfaction? I know that just based on the amount of caring they have for the city, they really, really care. But what is it that they want back? What makes them feel honored? What will help retain them?
You know, that's a great comment, cause there is a, there's another, there's a couple of surveys that, there's one group, I went to a training a while back and they offer a free one that is basically, it's geared towards your employees. I'm gonna go back and look at the context of that one, but that may be something I can do in the interim. Send out a, because that wouldn't take very long. My only issue is I don't think all employees have email addresses that are city email addresses, so. But I, and I'd really like to hear from all employees, not just the stat, you know, the department heads, but from every employee. So I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay. I think that would be better than just blanket saying, this is what we believe is best for you.
No, yeah, definitely. And another thing, emergency operations.
Yes.
Do, what department are we looking at? Any expenditures, like supplies, that kind of stuff? Support equipment?
Yes, it still falls under the PD, so our chief. So all this does is actually give them a designated line item that's for emergency services.
Okay.
And I don't know.
6,000 we budgeted this year for.
Is that replacing the defunct radios and?
It's really just creating a placeholder, so that in the budget, we have a budget and items. So if we can, if we think everything we, yeah, it's a fudge factor. If we need to increase it or not, you know, if we utilize it or we need to increase it, we have a line item now.
Okay, okay.
Miscellaneous unpredictable item.
Well, but see, I don't want miscellaneous. This is specifically, Merci said, thank you. Thank you, Paul. You hit the button and you got the response you expected.
It's kind of like when you move and you label a box miscellaneous or doodads.
Yes.
Which basically means I have no idea what this is or where it goes.
I never really.
We were unpacking and my youngest told my oldest, you have like four boxes and they all say the same thing. Jesse's miscellaneous stuff.
I moved out of a house that I was in for 14 years and the attic access was in my son's closet. And when we were, he was, he was off to school. So I'm in there, you know, finding all of these, oh, that's how he cleans his room. So I'm in the box shoving through the attic door.
Smart kid.
Smart kid.
Yeah. Some of those boxes still have his stuff in it in the house.
That's awesome. I'll let you know when the burn van is ready.
Probably less than a month.
On the curb, that's it.
All right, well, I don't have anything else unless y'all have anything else for me this evening.
I think the biggest questions that we're gonna have is going in, or the biggest requests that I'm getting from citizens, it's either in utility, well, it's capital projects, really. So it's increasing the reliability of the utility system. It's investing into drainage, it's investing in the streets. And so I think that that's where we're gonna have a lot of questions, a lot, need a lot of input in terms of how, how much impact we can do with the money that we have through different financing means or cash means or other ways that we can really maximize the amount of money that we have to really give people a noticeable difference.
Agreed.
So I think that that's.
Our utility, when we get to the utility part, that's what we're gonna talk about is investing in that.
You said we're gonna have two more workshops. Both at council meetings. What, what, when are you gonna give us the spreadsheets to look at? And, but also.
Whenever you want them. I was, I was proposing not getting to them yet.
That's right, and that's fine.
I'm thinking I may give them to you after the next budget workshop. In part, the only thing we'll still be waiting on then technically is our final appraisal amount. That comes out on July 23rd. And so the next meeting is July 13th. So we'll still be waiting on that. But at the next meeting, I intend to talk to you about all the other funds. So tonight was just general fund and part of that was to get us to think about operations and operation costs. The next, the next meeting, which we have not a lot of time to prepare for, will be all the other funds. It'll be general fund plus everything else.
That's right. And then the, and then the last meeting will be kind of a summation of everything you've been telling us.
Yeah.
The last.